Hello, everyone. Welcome to the City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting of March 2nd. It is now 5:34. So may we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Bossman. Councillor Buell.
Here.
Councillor Yussa.
Here.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy.
Present.
Mayor Baxter.
Present. Do we have a translator this evening? So we can introduce them? Is that you, Carlos? Staff, do we have a translator this evening? Maybe they can't hear me.
Yeah.
Please acknowledge if you can hear.
You unmute him.
Thank you. Do we have a translator this evening that we would like to introduce?
Sorry, Mayor. Just got the audio two seconds ago. We do have a translator. His name is Carlos, and he can do the introduction.
Thank you, Tom. We can't hear you very well.
Okay, I'll have to check in with Victor on that.
All right. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Carlos, and I am the Community Language COA. Bear with me as I interpret. I want to thank you for prioritizing health equity through language justice as much as possible. We want to make sure everyone is able to speak, read, listen, and participate in the language of their hearts, meaning the one that they speak with their families are best connected to. The interpretation setting will be turned on here momentarily. You will see a globe icon on the right-hand side of your screen. Click on that to select your language, then mute the original audio, otherwise it can be distracting or confusing. Please make sure to keep your mic on mute to hear the speaker clearly, and I will keep my camera off to encourage everyone to look at the speaker. Thank you very much, and I'll say it in Spanish. Hola a todos, mi nombre es Carlos, from Community Language COA. Les pido por favor tener paciencia en lo que interpreto, lo que se está diciendo. Quiero agradecerles por priorizar la equidad en salud a través de la justicia del lenguaje, tanto como sea posible. Queremos asegurarnos de que todos puedan hablar, leer, escuchar, y participar en el idioma de sus corazones, es decir, el que mejor hablan con sus familias o como mejor se conectan. Una vez que termine, el ajuste de interpretación se activará. Van a haber un icono de un globo en el lado derecho de su pantalla. Hagan clic en el globo para seleccionar su idioma. De ahí pueden silenciar el audio original, de lo contrario puede ser un poco confuso. So, por favor, asegúrense de mantener el micrófono en silencio para escuchar el altavoz con claridad. Y mi cámara permanecerá apagada para animar a todos a ponerle atención facilitada. Muchas gracias. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Carlos. We appreciate it. Are there any actual or perceived conflicts of interest with councillors on tonight's agenda?
No.
Great, seeing none. We'll move on then to public participation. Do we have any public participation on our list? And do we have any virtual participants?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you, Fay. Excellent. So we have Ellie Clark with Durango High School. Come on up and state your name and if you're a resident of the city.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Ellie Clark, and I'm the Student Body Co-president at Durango High School. February has been an active month at DHS, and here are some of the highlights. In athletics, we are closing out the winter sports season. Our girls' basketball team made it to the state quarterfinals. Our wrestling program took five competitors to the state tournament and won Lady Demon to the girls' state finals. We are excited with the growth of the wrestling program since four years ago when we didn't have a full team. Our boys' basketball team made it to the second round of state playoffs. In activities, our DECA Business Skills Program competed at the state finals last weekend. We had five state finalists and four national qualifiers. Our knowledgeable team is getting ready for state finals. They currently have the fourth highest score in the state. Our clubs were busy highlighting various weeks during February. Our FFA, Agriculture, and FCC LA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America both highlighted what they were doing at the DHS Student Body. Speech and Debate qualified eight competitors for the all-state championship and won second place at regionals. Our Black Student Alliance did an awareness campaign throughout Black History Month and capped off the month with a soul dinner last week. DHS Choir left today for their Carnegie Hall Concert in New York City on March 6th. Based on most recent data, we have a 94.6 graduation rate last year. We are thrilled with this rate, given the circumstances of the past two years. We are putting the finishing touches on our Portrait of a Graduate program. Portrait of a Graduate is a collaborative program between 9R and Durango Community stakeholders that have put together what skills and attitudes we feel are important for a graduate of DHS to have. We've identified several key characteristics, and now we are getting to roll it out to the student body. 2022 to 2023 student leadership elections are just around the corner. Next week, we will be electing our student leadership for next year. Thanks again to Ms. Phillips and Ms. Harmer for joining us and sharing their expertise, support, and encouragement. Troop 1096 just closed their show, "Radium Girls," and they're currently working on the Underclassmen Gala and Into the Woods. And finally, on behalf of DHS, thank you to Amy Phillips for all of her support at DHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
And thank you, Amy.
Yes.
Thank all of you for the opportunity. It's been wonderful. When's that retirement date coming up? April 1st.
That's right. It was an April fool's joke. She's not really leaving. Do we have any virtual attendees who would like to make a public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. We were originally scheduled to go number six, Executive Session. Dirk, do we need to do a motion or anything not to go into? Thank you.
Ellie, thank you.
You just take no action at this point. I think, I understand it will be postponed.
Okay, so we're postponing the Executive Session then. All right. So proclamations and presentations. We have a city operational update.
Yes, Mayor and council, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind joining me. We do have a special announcement and presentation for you this evening before we get started. It kind of was alluded to, and it was pretty good, I think, of a dovetail into this and a recognition for Amy Phillips's service to the City of Durango. Amy has done just amazing work for the 17 years that she's served in getting council meetings ready. I know a lot of people, when you look at it, there's just a lot of work that goes behind the scenes of getting agendas done, dealing with directors and maybe a city manager who has an item that comes in late, and just helping us get through the process of everything when it goes into council meetings and being able to be a point of just knowledge and caring in going through it. And coming from somebody who's been here only a year and a half, I have to say thank you for just being so understanding and so teaching of things that going through, and you've always just been an awesome person to see every morning coming in and providing that helping hand. So on behalf of myself and the city staff, I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done, and just, we will miss you terribly and really wish you the best of luck on your next, in your next adventure. And we'll pass it over to the Mayor for comments from the council.
Before we do that.
Yes. And from the city staff, we do have a plaque, I guess is what you would call it, or a presentation for you in dedication to your service so that you can always have it, and wherever your travels may take you, that you always remember Durango and that you always have a home here.
Thank you so much.
Amy, thank you. From the beginning, you helped lead us all through everything we had to go through, right? How to apply to be on a city council, how to do everything else. And from way back when, even when I was on boards and commissions, you were always there for us, and I so appreciated that. You always smiled. You never frowned at anybody, and your voice was always filled with happiness. So we want to say, council, we want to say thank you very much for your service.
Thank you so very much.
Oh, my gosh.
You were always a guide for us. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Oh, I just, like I said earlier, it's been an absolute pleasure, and I've enjoyed every, every minute of serving this community and the City of Durango, and serving so many councils and mayors and council people. It's, it's been wonderful, working with all of the wonderful leadership that you have always provided, and of course, all of the wonderful employees. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you all, and I will miss you too, but I'll be watching. I can see you on TV.
I just want to add too, Amy, you're going to be missed. As, as the Mayor said, you have, you brought all of us on. You took us through those initial campaigns, and you've supported all of the city staff and council throughout, and you're, it's just, I can't even imagine it here without you, honestly. So, thank you.
A retirement well-deserved dinner.
Wonderful, then. Okay, so now we have a transit update. A little anticlimactic, but okay.
Follow that, Sarah.
That's a tough one.
Hi, your mayor, so.
So I got you started, huh?
At least I do have some good news to follow that as well. Mayor and council, I'm Sarah Hill. I'm your Transportation Director.
Recording in progress.
And I am here tonight just to offer a really brief operational update. Here to offer a brief operational update on the Highway 160 West Route, which I'm thrilled to announce that we were able to launch yesterday. And I want to offer really sincere gratitude to this council for your support and the role that you had in, in launching this route and making this happen, and it's already had an impact on people's lives. Here's a picture from the West Side Transit Stop yesterday of a group that gathered to -- I'm already emotional. It's really, it's a really awesome opportunity to get to see work making an impact in people's lives, and you all are a part of that. So thank you. The lack of public transit on the 160 West Route has been significant disadvantage to the populations that live out there, and in addition to, you know, the high volume of affordable and accessible housing that's on the corridor, it also serves a high number of human service agencies such as La Plata, La Plata County, Human, what are they? The Health Department.
Human Service Department.
Thank you. Manasoupe Kitchen, Southwest Center for Independence, among a number of others. So we are really thrilled to be able to get out there. It was a very collaborative process across many city departments and the community, and I want to extend a special thank you to the Community Relation Commission's Latinx Subcommittee. They've been strong supporters and advocates of getting the route returned to 160 West, and they even did their own survey and gathered some testimonials from residents to identify and illustrate the impact that this route would have. So I want to brag a little bit on our city teams by highlighting some of the challenges and the solutions that we came up with in order to get this out. Number one, funding. How are we going to fund expanded service? There has been quite an influx of transit funding for or through the COVID relief packages like the CARES, CHRISAA, and ARPA projects. These programs are going to fund Durango Transit at 100% through 2023, and they're also going to extend CDOT's 5311 program. The Transportation Commission is actually looking at a proposal in two weeks that will eliminate the distribution transition plan that we're on and will cap us at that year five amount. So we are looking at an annual 5311 operating award of about $790,000 into the future.
And that would have dropped to?
$450,000, yeah. And then additionally, the lodgers tax amount that's dedicated to transportation is going to be critical post-COVID relief funding in order to maintain this expanded level of service. We looked at a pretty significant staffing shortage. If you remember, way back in October, you guys approved additional staffing to get this route launched. We didn't have an application for a transit driver for almost four months. So using COVID relief, we developed a one-time retention and sign-on bonus for transit drivers, which is really successful, and we ended up hiring four full-time drivers and two part-time drivers, which is a healthy staffing level and allowed us to be able to get out there. So I really want to thank the HR team for being a partner with us in that and making that happen. And then we faced a vehicle shortage delay that we weren't expecting. We received a grant in 2020 to replace six transit vehicles that we were relying on to expand service. Because of supply chain issues, we are unable, we won't be receiving those buses until this summer. So we were faced with a really real challenge of not having enough buses to operate the expanded route, even once we were fully staffed. So our fleet division came up with the idea to use one of our decommissioned paratransit buses that was getting ready to go to a public auction, so that they prepared that for us and got it back on the road. As a paratransit bus, it only has seating for four passengers. So you can see in the picture here on the left-hand side, we ordered some extra benches, and we now have seating in that paratransit bus for 10 passengers, which should meet our need in the short term while we wait for our full-size buses. And then most recently, we were told by CDOT that the process for permanent transit stop signs has to go through their long approval process for right-of-way, but they were willing to collaborate with us to go ahead and install some temporary signage so that we can get the route out sooner than later. This is the route, and we are operating seven days a week. Every 30 minutes, we leave the transit center at 5:00 and 35:00 after the hour, head north up to Ninth Street, do a loop around El Paso, hit Manasoupe Kitchen, and head down Rusa to 160 West. We go up into the tech center to Tim Burnett Court to serve all of the agencies there, and we go as far west as the Wildcat Condos. Here's some more pictures from yesterday. We were met with a pretty overwhelming amount of gratitude from the residents that live out there, and I just wanted to reiterate my gratitude to you guys for your support and really look forward to being able to expand service, continue to improve transit, meet the demands of the community, working collaboratively with you guys. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You did great work, Sarah.
Absolutely. And if I may, Mayor and council, just add a comment. I think when we look at that vision statement and you see those photos, I think you really begin to see the vision where we strive to be really begin to come to life. I also want to thank Sarah and Transit and their leadership of seeing a problem, understanding the challenges, and coming up with solutions and finding a way to get to it, and a total team effort when we look at HR, when we talk about the retention policy fleet, when we look at finding out how to get vehicles out there to get this route started. It's just been a great effort when you see everything start to come together, and just want to thank everyone for their work on this and their visioning to make this, make this a priority and also make it happen.
And I would just like to add a little anecdote. So I had heard about this group gathering, and I went down to the transit station thinking that they were gathering there, and there was no one there but the bus driver. So I got to meet Phil, our new bus driver, who is just thrilled and so proud to be working. And then I thought, oh, well, I missed him, or it's, you know, I got confused. And Phil said, well, why don't you just, you know, why don't you just get on, hop on the bus? I'm like, okay, but you know, I don't even have my transit pass or anything. He's like, don't worry, I'll hop on the bus and take a ride. So we were able to, and I wanted to tell you that there were probably 30 people there, mostly mothers and children, and they all kind of got on the bus at the beginning, and I went to Phil and said, Phil, I think we've got a limitation for how many people. He's like, yeah, I think so, too. So that bus could have been twice or three times as full, spread the number of people who were out there. And Sarah, I just want to thank you as well to working with it and working with your staff and others to make this happen, because I know how important it is to that community.
Thank you. And you weren't just met with one challenge, like it was after, after ongoing, and so congratulations for problem-solving and figuring it all out and making it happen.
And being able to hire staff. Creative.
Appreciative of being able to do that.
So wonderful to get this route back. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And no more crying in the council.
Thank you. So now we're on to the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Ms. Phillips, may we have a reading of the consent agenda items, please?
Certainly. Items 8.1 and 8.2 are approval of minutes. 8.1, the minutes from the February 15th City Council Study Session. 8.2, the minutes from the February 15th City Council Regular Meeting. Items 8.3 and 8 through 8.5 are discussion and possible action items. 8.3 concerns resolution R2022-11 authorizing additional appropriation to the grants fund for childcare operations and workforce sustainability grants that will close by September 30th, 2023. 8.4 concerns the funding for homeless plan implementation. 8.5 concerns resolution R2022-12 authorizing an appropriation for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant that will close by September 30th, 2023. And items 8.6 through 8.8 are requests for public hearings with the proposed date of March 15th, 2022. 8.6 is to consider adoption of the North Main Gateway Urban Renewal Plan. 8.7 is to consider AB Durango Inc. for the installation of an emergency access and associated improvements to service, a new residential development in Three Springs, and 8.8 is to consider water rate revisions.
Thank you very much. Are there any consent agenda items that councillors would like to remove? I'd like to pull 8.4.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without item 8.4, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote call, please?
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Yussa?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So 8.4 is discussion and possible action concerning the funding for homeless planning implementation. And I just wanted to point out that twice in the packet documents, it's mentioned that they would be circling back with the city and county and requesting for Manas to receive full funding in 2022 immediately, which is great, and put on the radar potential funding in 2023 and 2024 at a, at a rate of about $170,000 a year. So I really support what's going on with this plan. However, I am concerned that we're looking at the possibility of three years in a row of operating capital coming from the joint sales tax. I think we need to have a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners, because I know that's something that has really concerned them in the past, and I also know that we were trying to look at a way of how the grant writers and other staff would be able to find funding in order to meet this. So I, I just wanted to express my, a little bit of concern about that and that I'd like to see us encourage them to try to find operational dollars other than the joint sales tax. That was really my only concern.
But do they need approval for this coming year?
Yes, this is for this one.
Yeah.
So you're just requesting a discussion item for the future, but you are in support of this?
I am in support of the 2022, yes, absolutely. And it's not that I wouldn't support 2023 or '24, but I think it's something that we need to make sure we talk about, because it wasn't, I don't think it was our original intention to, to continue on doing the operational support, to encourage them to use the operational dollars to create grants that would fund them for their operations, so that we could put our dollars into capital items that might be more useful.
No, you raise a good point, Mayor, and I've heard in previous meetings with the commissioners, they're concerned that all of the joint sales, you know, so much of the joint sales tax right now is used for operations rather than, you know, a one- or two-year capital project. So I think that's a good discussion, both for the homeless and for the larger issue of, is it appropriate for ongoing support to come, be coming out of the joint sales tax?
And that was just my only comment.
I would support that as well. Yes, I would support it, too.
Then in that case, I'm going to make a motion, that I don't usually do, but to approve 8.4, a discussion and possible action concerning the funding for homeless.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Yussa?
Yes.
And Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
I just threw a little wrench in the works there, so you see how you handle it on your last. All right, so now we're on to public hearings, or do we need to be changing our order because we usually don't do public hearings until 6:30?
Yes, Mayor and council, when we moved our agenda start time to 5:30, we did make a commitment that we would do the best to make sure that we didn't start public hearings until 6:30, just to give the public the ability to return home in case that they were out working and coming from. If we, if we wanted to, we could do, move up some items. The introduction of ordinances would be one that we could move up, just so that we wait till 6:30 before we call those public hearings.
Okay, so we'll move item 12 up to item 11, introduction of ordinances. So 12.1 is an ordinance adopting a fire code regulating and governing the safeguarding of life and property from fire explosion hazards arising from the storage, handling, and use of hazardous substances, materials, and devices, and from conditions hazardous to life or property in the occupancy of buildings and premises in the City of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date.
Yes, Mayor, the first ordinance is ordinance O2022-3. There are seven of these ordinances that are related, so rather than going, we will need to adopt them one at a time, because we're adopting them by reference, but I would point out that these were subject to a hearing before council at the most recent city council meeting. They are adopting, the updating, the adoption of the building code and various subcategories of the building code. So again, I will be happy to answer any questions, but again, this one is ordinance number three, and then there will be three through nine as we move through these, but they will require, unfortunately, the reading of each title and a separate motion to adopt each of these. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if council has them as we go through.
Do we have any questions on 12.1 for Mr. Nelson? No? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O2022-3.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yussa?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
And post that vote, I should say that there was a great deal of cooperation between city staff and DFPD regarding this particular, the fire code, and how it would be applied in the city. So there was a good deal of time spent with staff, so I want to give appreciation for DFPD staff, particularly Corolla, Corolla Hanks was involved in assisting and putting this one together.
12.2, an ordinance providing for the regulation and governing of fuel gas systems and gas-fired appliances within the City of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Fuel and Gas Code published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Are there any questions for Mr. Nelson? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O2022-4.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. On to 12.3, an ordinance providing for the regulation and control of the design, construction, quality of materials, erection, installation, alteration, repair, location, relocation, replacement, addition to use or maintenance of one and two family dwellings and townhomes within the city of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Do we have any questions for Mr. Nelson? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2022-5.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Item 12.4, an ordinance for the regulation and control of the design, construction, installation, quality of materials, location, operation, and maintenance of heating, ventilation, cooling, and refrigeration systems, incinerators, and other miscellaneous heat-producing appliances within the city of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Mechanical Code, published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? May we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
I was just going to say we were getting good at this.
I could figure out your system.
I have it all numbered here, you just ruined it.
Oh, well, I can, I can pull back. You can second. I'll second, how about that? Oh, okay. I'll move to approve ordinance O-2022-6.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
And you made it hard on Amy. She had to change it all up.
Yeah. Come on, it's got to be a challenge on her last night. 12.5, an ordinance for the regulation and control of the erection, installation, alteration, addition, repair, relocation, replacement, maintenance, or use of any plumbing system within the city of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Plumbing Code, published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Are there any questions for Mr. Nelson? May we have a motion, please?
Do you want to go, or you want me to go?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2022-7. I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.6, an ordinance for the establishment of minimum prescriptive and performance-related regulations for the design of energy-efficient buildings and structures within the city of Durango, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code, published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2022-8.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.7, an ordinance for the provision of minimum standards to safeguard life, health, property, and public welfare by the regulation and control of the design, construction, quality of materials, use and occupancy, location and maintenance of all buildings and structures within the city of Durango and certain equipment specifically regulated herein, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Building Code, published by the International Code Council, Inc., and declaring an effective date. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2022-9.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.8, an ordinance granting, and that's supposed to be a utility easement or an utility, an, okay. An ordinance granting and a utility easement to Charter Communications to install fiber-optic telecommunications on city-owned property at Avenue Del Sol to service customers in the area and declaring an effective date. Any questions for Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I can quickly say this will obviously be ordinance O-22-10. This was also subject to a hearing at the last council meeting, and the easement is attached in the, in the packet to grant this easement to Charter Communications.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2022-10.
I'll second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And now I understand why we only adopt the international code changes once every four years.
Okay.
That was a pretty quick run-through, something that takes a long time.
Well, much appreciation for putting it together. Thank you. Okay, so, get that all the way. It's not even, it's only 6:10. So.
Council reports and actions?
Sure, why not? Let's move on to council reports and actions, which is item number 14, for those of you watching. Councilors, any reports and actions you want to talk about?
Sure, I'll start. I had the Creative Economy Commission on. Let's see, we had a Common Threads update. We did have one contractor respond to the RFP. They're vetting them now, and we're hopeful that as long as everything goes smooth, that we'll get Common Threads installed in the spring. So that's exciting, and yeah, so we'll go through that. In terms of continued business, we talked about our 22 priorities and our draft work plan, through our seven goals, statuses on the 2022 goals, making sure everyone had contacts and so on and so forth. We talked about the lodger's tax application. There's a working group that's going to be finalizing it for the next, the March Creative Economy Commission meeting, so that will have an application for people to submit requests to use the lodger's tax. And then this, we're coming up with programs to get a call to artists for funding, and so some, we have a little working group working on that as well. And then we had a presentation, so this project's been around for a while. It's the Durango Arts Conference and Event Center. It was the STEAM for a long time, way back when. It's been, it was shelved because of COVID a while ago. I remember this project when I was at, when I worked for a construction company in town, and so that was over eight years ago. And so it's been around for quite some time. They did, with the loss of the Henry Strater Theater, I don't know if everyone knows that, they've kind of come back forward to try to provide us another, a space again for theater needs and so on and so forth. They have plans created, they want to take it to the next level and try to find land, and they're looking for funding. They came and did a little proposal of where they're at and what they're doing, and so they might, some requests for lodger's tax funding to help with that project, but we'll see. But so that was an interesting little update. And then I had the Airport Commission meeting on February 17th. We had a donation, they have a donation station, and so, and semi-annually, they select a nonprofit to receive funds, and so they had for the last half of 2021, they have a check that will be going to the Women's Resource Center on behalf of the airport, and then funds collected from January 2022 through June 30th, 2022, will be going to the First Southwest Community Fund. And so that, there was that update. We also had a terminal design project update. Schematic design has started for the selected Concept 2 that we have seen. They showed a bunch more renderings and kind of a little bit of a deeper vision, and so that has started. Let's see here, we had some discussion on 820 Airport Road leasing. So we, the airport owns 820 Airport Road. It was leased back to who we bought it from, but then they just filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy, and so we're, the airport's in the process of trying to find renters for that facility. There's warehouse and office space. And then, other points, January 2022, we finished up at 91% of 2019 levels, so there was just a tiny drop from like the end of last year, but they've had staffing problems from airlines that have caused cancellations, and so considering actually everything that I think had gone down, that's actually not too bad. I talked about the terminal development, as you know, the runway rehab project is still going through. I just like to remind people, the runway will be closed from September 7th through the 16th of this year, and that was kind of it in terms of the airport. Barbara and I sat in on the healthcare meeting. What is the official title? Okay, I thought I was missing it, and so I'm not, you're, I feel better about myself.
Working group on a resilient healthcare system.
There we go. Yeah, I know. You can kind of fill into, some of the biggest key takeaways I took away from that meeting is there was a couple studies done in Colorado and then for rural towns, and how one local hospital creates about 26.3 local jobs and nearly 1.4 million in income wages, salary, and benefits from the clinic and hospital. And then I thought it was interesting, too, that in Colorado, physicians created a total of $31 billion in direct and indirect economic output. So they were talking just about how much one physician coming into a rural town like Colorado can have for our, our community outside of just like their own job. So it says physicians supported 1,000, or 175,000 jobs, including their own, a total of direct and indirect positions. On average, each physician supported about 13 jobs. And so you can see like if we can support and retain physicians here in Durango at our hospitals, what an economic impact it will have. And so I think just moving forward with that, like working group that we have, just trying to create that culture and find a way to best support, you know, our hospitals in retaining physicians is, is important, and I don't know if you want to add anything from that meeting?
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that we also talked about the nexus of retaining and recruiting staff and having a place for them to live, and then Jessica and I also shared with some of the things the city's doing, and that, most recently, the approval of a close to 400 new units being developed, and, and they also talked about that as an issue for, not just retaining physicians and nurses, but staff all the way through and the importance of workforce housing.
And they reached out in, for our March meeting to have like a housing update, and so I didn't know if maybe we could have Eva or Kevin, if you, or do that presentation, because I think that would be better than Barbara and I with the information, so. And that was, I think that was all I had to do this month, or this last couple weeks, yeah, I think that was, that's me, I'm done.
I had a really long CML meeting, but I'm going to wait till next month to update you guys on that, just because they're in the middle of the whole legislative session, and it's just, yeah, it's easier, I think.
Perfect, yeah, you have more outcomes.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll jump in. In addition to the, that Mercy meeting, I did want to just do an announcement, and then I'll go into some of the meetings, but there is a, a meeting on March 30th. It's Rural Physician Burnout and Healing, and it's a community discussion, and this was brought up on Monday at the Public Health and Regular Meeting. And basically, just as you know, rural hospitals and physician practices face an ever-evolving set of challenges, one of which is the burnout of dedicated physicians on the front lines of care delivery, and they talked about that particularly in this time of COVID, and how that's been exacerbated. And please join us for an open discussion around physician burnout in southwest Colorado and potential solutions. Through an interactive discussion of a real-world case study, we will explore the individual and structural issues that contribute to burnout in a rural setting. That's Wednesday, March 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Viosito Room at the Fort Lewis, the student union. So I did want to have the community aware of that because we do see that reduction in physicians in the community and others, nurses leaving as well, and other healthcare professionals. I attended the Community Relations Commission in between, between our meetings, and first of all, they were thrilled with the reinstatement of the 160, and I do want to give a shout out to that commission, particularly the Latinx community that worked on that. They also talked about the West Side Mobile Home and the impact that will have if it is sold to a developer. And you recall that, that's, there's an opportunity to do this, a similar thing as was done at the Animus View Mobile Home, and that's to form their own HOA and then possibly purchase that. And I just want to give you a sense of the numbers. There are 64 spaces in the West Side Mobile Home, and in the park next to it, Triangle, which I think is going through the same thing, has 12. So that's 76 units where people are living, working, and these are folks that come to work in the city. I'll remind folks that that space is in the county. Jose, there's a whole group that's been meeting to work with this community on what it would take, and I know that, I'm going to give a shout out to the county because I know they've really been working on that and looking at possible ways of partnering. So I just want us to be aware of what a loss that would be if that does, if they aren't able to go through, but what I'm hearing is incredible commitment and support and organization, and also being helped by other nonprofits in the community. So, thank you. You guys know who you are, and I want to appreciate you for that. The IAB, I spoke earlier, but I wanted the public to hear, we had a really productive meeting on February 22nd. Staff were great, and we reached a real, what I, a good, in my mind, a good solution for the water rates, and it's a one-year solution while we look at those. It'll be coming to council, we had the discussion earlier, but I did want to also thank the folks that participated in that, including the staff and the council members. It was really great to, you know, as a liaison, I'm not as interactive, but to see the whole process and the compromise that people were willing to make to reach something that they could all get behind. The Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund, we are meeting again on that. We had 16 applicants for the managing director position, so Melissa in less than a year come quite a ways. And then the last thing I just wanted to share with you is Chief Bramer, I was able to, I want to recognize him and his team, I was able to participate in the citizen review panel, citizen complaint review panel, and that's, I was in, I requested and was invited because of my role as a liaison to the Community Relations Commission, because particularly after the, the murder of death of George Floyd, there was a lot of issue around that, and it was such an incredible experience to participate in. The deputy chief and the sergeant provided all kinds of material on the complaints, and the people who came, I was there more as a witness and maybe to raise questions, but the people who came had clearly pored through hours and hours of video and materials and had really thoughtful things to say, have you considered this, or, you know, as a person of color in this community, I couldn't experience it this way or this way. I found it really insightful, and I've encouraged perhaps that, that panel to speak to the Community Relations Commission, possibly putting that on their agenda. And I also had the suggestion that, to, to the extent that it might be available, I would encourage any council member to possibly participate on that. I think it was extremely educational, and Chief, thank you for, for being open to my request to sit on that and allowing me to get an inside view of the operations. I think you have much to be proud of. And on that note, that was the week and a half.
And on that note, I want to thank Chief Bramer for inviting me, because I was the mayor, to the Punch Bowl banquet that was held just recently, and it's a recognition and award ceremony for police officers, police staff, and dispatch. It was a blast. It was at the La Plata County Fairgrounds, and it was really fun seeing everybody talk about everybody else, including the chief. There were some interesting videos, so. So there were awards for the officers who provided the most DUI arrests and prevented the most DUI crimes, you know, maybe hurting people, injuring people. That was awesome. There were a whole team of gentlemen who did that. There was also awards for leadership among the upper ranks of the police department, so thanking the leadership for paying attention to what's going on with their, with their staff, with line officers, and what their needs are, and recognizing that sometimes you stay after work to have conversations. needs are. And recognizing that sometimes you stay after work to have conversations because it's important. The core team was also recognized, which is the mental health team that we put into place that the police department has created with access and how much contribution they've made to our community with mental health and drug issues for arrests and also counseling. There was also, the dispatch received award also for a gentleman who did training and worked with other staff members to help them come forward and become better at their jobs. I thought it was awesome. And of course, there's always a roast, you know, at any kind of banquet like this. And Chief Bramer got his share of that. And what was also interesting to me was that the entire team really showed their appreciation for you and how much they appreciated your leadership and your guidance and, and where we're going with the police department. And I just want to say thank you. So on that note also, lock your cars. Don't leave the keys in them. Don't leave anything valuable in your car. And just be safe with it. We have a video coming out.
Yes. Do not know the specific date. It should be coming out here pretty soon. I know I saw the draft video of it this week. So let me admit it now.
Explaining how you can stop your car from getting stolen. I'll tell you the number one thing is just walk in place. Then the natural lands board met and we talked about twin buttes with the e-bikes. There was a trial over the last year or so there and the results from the survey that was done with at the trial. And they, they're going to be making a recommendation to council. I know that we have tentatively received the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Board and that the multimodal board is also going to make a recommendation about whether to allow e-bikes at the twin buttes area permanently. So I think that's pretty exciting. It's, it's created some interesting discussion. And the natural lands board, the multimodal board and the Parks and Rec Board will be, they've created a subcommittee and they will be taking up the topic of what would it take if we wanted to put e-bikes on others of our open space lands? What would it take to make that happen? And what would be the impacts? And how to get public feedback on that. So I'm sure we'll be hearing from them on those topics. We also heard a lot of concern about the homeless camp being, well, we didn't hear it, the board had a lot of concern about the homeless camp, the managed camp being up at the tech center location and its impact on Overend Park, which is our public park. So, and the trails and safety. So that, they wanted, they will probably be doing a letter to the county as representatives of the natural lands board saying, we're concerned about this location for a managed homeless camp. And then they are also going to go to in-person meetings. So they're pretty excited about that. There are some members of that board who have never met each other in person. So they're really looking forward to that.
May I make one more announcement?
Sure.
I just wanted the community to know that there is a public forum on Thursday, March 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM by the fire district. So the presentation will be from Chief Doherty. And moderated questions and answers from pre-submitted questions will be entertained. If you have a question you'd like to address, you can send it to durangofire.org. All questions must be pre-submitted. And again, that's March 10th. Oh, it'll be, excuse me, the location, it'll be an in-person forum and it will be held at 201 East 12th Street. And a viewable live stream will be available from the DFPD website. So I.
Mention what the topic of the meeting is about?
Well, I'm assuming it is about the fire district location in the 9R building.
Yes. Well, I just thought we should let the public know that part of it, too.
Oh, here, let's say, excuse me, I missed it. The downtown fire station and the administration building project. So, thank you.
And then real quick, another announcement. The city of Durango on their website has a questionnaire to, for design concepts for downtown Durango. And so I thought it was really important, if anyone's listening, to get on there. It is durango.gov backslash downtown Maine. And you can click the link there to provide your feedback on some design concepts for downtown Maine Avenue. Right now, it says the questionnaire is open until March 4th, but I believe that's getting extended. So, but get on there and give us some feedback.
And Jose, do you want to mention the Durango Santa Clara competition?
Oh, absolutely. Please check out our social media outlets. We are against social, we're against Santa Clara, California in a strong towns competition. And so I believe I should know the date. It's relatively here soon when voting ends. And so the more votes the city Durango gets, we move on. There are 16 cities from all over the country that were chosen. So please get out there and vote and let's beat Santa Clara.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments by councilors? All right. So it is 6:30. So we can now move on to public hearings. The city council previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearings for each hearing listed below. The following proposed ordinances or topics have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues dealt within this section of the agenda are of a legislative or policy nature. 11.1, public hearing to consider an ordinance amending chapter 23, section 30 of the Durango Code of Ordinances to include menstrual products as tax exempt. Ms. Hyder.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Erin Hyder, Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services. Before opening up tonight's public hearing, I wanted to provide just a brief summary of the process so far leading up to tonight's public hearing. In late fall of last year, the Community Relations Commission had a discussion to consider providing menstrual products and facility facilities for free and also considering treating menstrual products as tax exempt purchases. So in our December 7th study session, I believe we had a conversation around initially around providing free menstrual products in the public access city facilities. And council provided direction to staff to make that happen. Also, there is additional discussion and direction to staff to explore more of what it might look like to consider treating menstrual products as tax exempt. So therefore, in February, our February 1st study session, we brought back the information that we found out of what this like, what this might look like in action. Staff provided information around how other cities are addressing it, those in Colorado that have made this change to their code, any impact to businesses from the administration of updating that in their, you know, point of sale systems. And we provided a estimation of fiscal impact to the city, to our city sales tax revenue. And then at that point, we were directed to, to seek a public hearing, to seek more input from the public. Happy to find anything else before you get started.
Dirk, was there anything you needed to add on this one or not?
Not in terms of, no, I think everything that Erin has or what's in the packet. I don't have anything to add specifically. The process would be, I would just add that the process would be to adopt an ordinance because the exemptions are contained in the city code, we would need to adopt an ordinance. So this is the first step in a possible ordinance process. So if council wants to make a determination tonight about whether or not you would like to move forward with an ordinance change to add an exemption to the code, then that process would begin depending on how come up tonight's guidance from council.
May I ask Dirk a question?
Well, yes, we'll get there in a second. I have to open the public hearing and do all that.
I do have a question.
Wanted to see if he had part of the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public here in the chambers that would like to ask a question and make a comment on this? How about virtually? Do we have any interested virtual people?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one person, Carla Erickson. Let me allow her to talk. And Carla, if you could just say if you're a city resident, we'll go ahead and get you going.
Carla, can you hear us? We can't hear you. You know, it might be the volume. Cause you know, Tom's kind of quiet. Is it possible we turn up our volume? Cause I kind of thought I might have heard her. We are not hearing you.
Mayor, let me try and promote her to panelists and see if that removes this block.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
All right, Carla, go ahead and unmute yourself and try now. Nope, still no luck.
Carla, we can't hear you.
It's showing that she's unmuted. I'm not sure what's going on.
Carla, I'm sorry.
She could send it in to us and it can go into the.
You could, you can email us or leave a message at the city clerk's office with your comments and we'll take that under consideration.
There was one that was included in the comments that I sent you today.
That from her also. Okay. So we did see your comments earlier today, Carla, just so you know, I'm sorry. Okay. So anyone else who wants to speak on this subject who's a member of the public virtually? Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counselors, do you have any questions for staff?
I have a question for the city attorney. First of all, thank you, well, thank you for asking the question of what other items are removed from.
Exempt from sales.
Exempt from sales tax. And did I see cigarettes are exempt from sales tax? And I guess I wanted to know what was the history behind making that item, if anyone knew.
They have their own sales.
They don't have, they're separately taxed, but they're not, I just wanted to get that understood. They have their own sales tax, but they're not taxed again.
We don't tax them as part of the sales tax, but there is a state tax that gets applied to cigarettes. And I don't have the history, but that's been the case for quite a long time. It's not a new thing.
Is it, is it kind of like the alcohol tax? Whereas if we tax it, we lose that portion of it that the state collects?
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to explain.
The state remits to us also. Any other questions, hon? Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to ask some of the history behind that rationale, which was what I had thought it would be. But, and it goes way back.
It goes way back, yes. And there, as you can see, some of those exemptions are probably historical in nature and were subject to being, you know, the legislature made decisions about a variety of things that were exempt. Because many of those exemptions that were in the city code or that are in the city code mirror those in the state law.
Is there any discussion on this subject from council?
Also, has this subject been brought up by any other, other councilors? In Durango, has any other council considered this before?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Oh, I just received a text from Sweetie Marbury who was trying to get in unsuccessfully. Someone has their.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. We had to close the public hearing and then Sweetie raised her hand. I guess if you want to either reopen the public hearing or we could just let her in.
So is, is she there? I don't, I, cause I don't see her name. Cause if she's there, I'll reopen the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Sweetie, can you hear us?
Well, wait, let me, I'm reopening the public hearing. Okay. Now, Sweetie? Can you hear us? Um, it seems we have a problem.
Yeah, this one's a call in. It says it's a call in listener. So I'm not, it's a little different from the last one, but it's obviously the same problem.
But we did have, John Simpson was able to talk. So is there anything that's changed since the study session?
We went to broadcast.
Sweetie, all I can say is that we have seen your public comments. We've read them. And I'm sorry, for some reason, we can't get you audibly here. Apologize for that. But thank you for your comments.
Yes, we will read your email. That's what she's saying. Yes. Oh, she would like us to read her email aloud, I believe.
We'll have Ms. Phillips pull it up and she can.
We can find that if anyone has.
You know which, what date it was or anything like that?
It was just this afternoon.
Let me see if I can find it. They have our here.
Yeah, of course. We have three minute limit, of course.
Thank you, guys. City Council, I read in the Legals about the proposed tax exempt proposal for menstrual care products. I certainly support this ordinance. However, I do not think that this ordinance is inclusive of other people. For example, the council speaks often of workforce housing. Many working people buy diapers on a frequent basis. I suggest to expand the ordinance to include diapers. For example, senior men and women living on a fixed income often buy bladder products. I suggest bladder projects, products be included in this ordinance. For example, the disabled buy bladder products. I suggest that the ordinance be expanded to include bladder products. I believe the expansion of the tax exempt products to be more inclusive and not exclusive. Thank you for your efforts in helping people in our community. Bayfield and Ignacio residents also shop in our stores. This proposed ordinance should be expanded.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And thank you. Now I'll close the public hearing.
We need to read the other person's email.
Carla, do you want to, Amy, do you want to pull Carla's email or?
She couldn't.
Sure.
Since we, we read one and Carla wasn't able to speak, I wanted to.
Oh, wrong, in email box. Got it.
Why are we providing free items in the first place? People need to be responsible for their own hygiene needs. I can assure you, these free items are being taken and used for situations that are not considered emergent. Why should taxpayers be footing the bill? People can afford to buy one item if needed from a machine if required. Feminine hygiene products will just be the start of many other items that people will want tax exempt status on. You start to carve out items of things for one group, I can assure you, the next group will want theirs. Leave well enough alone and don't make any of these types of items tax exempt. You are opening a can of worms that you will not be able to shit. I am totally against approving this item.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And thank you, Carla, for your comment. So the question tonight is whether or not we want to move forward with an ordinance on this. So is there any further discussion on that question?
Dirk, you might not know this. I Googled it and I think I found the answer, but I just want to make sure. There is no state sales tax on menstrual products. That was already taken out in 2018, correct?
I don't think so. I thought it was, it was a legislative effort to do so, but it failed.
What Dirk just said, that was proposed at the state level?
Okay. Okay.
There are some instances in other municipalities in Colorado that have done this.
Denver or Fort Collins, I've seen that. I just, I, I had read in this article that Fort Collins put out that menstrual products are already exempt from state sales tax because of a state law that took effect in 2018, but there was city taxes. And so I just wasn't sure how that worked or.
I can say that I researched that, but based on, my understanding is that it did come before the legislature recently, but it died. It never got really much past the committee stage, as I understand it. We can confirm that.
It's okay. I just, I, I was just researching a little bit and I had seen that and I just wasn't sure how that worked with state and city and the differences. And I know that there's cities in Colorado that have, that make this exempt.
Right. And just to point out, just for the public, I might, I might comment, just to follow up what you just said, is that because we're a home rural municipality, we could have exemptions that are different than the exemptions under the state law. So that is an important point to make. So, that is an important point to make. So we do have the authority to create new exemptions that the state, that aren't applicable to the state tax.
So Barbara, you're the CRC liaison, and this is kind of where this germinated. What's the rationale for this request? What, what is the desired impact and benefit, et cetera, and so forth?
If I, I'll, I'll try to capture it, and if I miss it, I'm hopeful that my colleagues on the CRC will let me know. It came about really because of the, the gender discrepancy, if you will. And I may not be using the most correct terms here, but that women who need these products are taxed, and there's a whole group of people who don't need any of these products, and they, they don't have that same taxation. And I, so that's pretty much how it started. I would like to just, if I may give a comment, are we open to counsel comment?
That's what we're, oh, yeah, sorry, closing the public hearing.
Yeah. You know, I'd like to say that I reckon, I'm looking up there, because we always think of the people in Zoom, we look up to the monitors, even though we can't see them. I recognize this as a first start, and I recognize that it may not go far enough for some, and it may be too big of a step for others. I actually support this start, this, this ordinance, the possibility of it. And I recognize that there's more that could be done, but my question was, it hasn't been considered by any other council yet, to date. So this is the first council that's even considering something like this, and so that in itself may be groundbreaking.
When you say more to be done, what does that mean?
Well, there could be more to be done. If I listen to Ms. Marbury, who said, you know, you don't go far enough in, in considering this. So I don't want to necessarily have it be exclusive, but right now I see it as a way to get started in looking at our taxation policies in that regard. But I also don't want to wait for the perfect to get in the way of what I consider might be good.
And a few things that I, as I'm researching this and thinking about it, I agree with Counselor Noseworthy, that it's a step. And sometimes we can't leap, and sometimes we have to take steps, and I feel like this is a good step. A few notes that I took, women pay a higher tax on menstrual products, while also continuing to earn an average of 17% less than our male counterparts. That is where this is painting a clear picture of how pressing I think the issue of period poverty is in the state of Colorado. I think that, in my research, seeing that the tax on menstrual products also jeopardizes the health and safety of women in Colorado. The vast majority of period products can't be reused. If they are in for longer than the recommended six to eight hours, it places them at increased risk for toxic shock syndrome and so on. Menstruators are experiencing homelessness, extreme poverty, maybe resorting to using other things, and making them more susceptible to TSS and dangerous health issues. The United Nations Human Rights Watch has declared access to clean, safe, and affordable menstrual products as a human right. I feel like we're seeing more public schools, districts requiring free menstrual products for girls. We're giving that, we're seeing that it's an issue as a city of Durango, and we're supplying free menstrual products in our facilities. I feel like if we say that we care about something and that this is an issue, and that we're here to support it, then we need to support it, and kind of stand behind what we feel is right, and what we can do to ensure the health, safety, and dignity of women in our community.
So I'm not certain how this does that. When you look at the group that uses menstrual products, it's a very, very diverse income level group. It goes all the way from probably 0% income to way more than I can even think about. So I'm not certain how this supports the conversation that you both are having for people who don't have the money to buy menstrual products, and that it's a challenge for them to purchase them and to pay sales tax on it. So I, I'm not quite getting that connection. We do have a sales tax rebate program, which can support that income level on this type of situation. The other thing that I, concerns me has to do with what Ms. Marbury said also, which has to do with, for example, diapers. So 27% of the population in the data that we received at any one point in time might be menstruating, and so they might need products. That's a fairly significant portion of the population. But we also have a huge proportion of our population who are, have children. And they're also of all income levels. So do we remove the sales tax on those products also? To the benefit of every income level, and not specifically target the income levels that we're really trying to take care of and support, and, you know, enhance their quality of life too, through our sales tax rebate program? Seniors have very significant issues that are unique in many ways to seniors. Same thing. We have an income, diversity of income there. So I don't quite understand how that's targeting the population we really want to target and support. What if you have dietary restrictions, and you can only eat sugar-free because you have diabetes? Does that mean then that all sugar-free products no longer are taxed, so they're tax-exempt? If you are gluten, you know, you have gluten issues, and you have to buy gluten-free products, does that mean that those products then become... I'm sure there's a million others. You have eye issues, you need special eye drops. So now those eye drops become tax-exempt? I don't understand, I don't quite get the connection between how not taxing menstrual products is supporting the financial well-being of women, when many of those women can afford to pay sales tax. So I'm not getting the connection. I haven't been convinced. And I, I don't see how we can do this for one specific discreet part of the population, because they have one particular situation, which means they have menstrual cycles, and we're not doing it for another portion of the population, which has other issues that only that portion of the population has. I'm, I don't, I can't get there from here at this point. So, I actually don't support this ordinance.
Here's where, because I was kind of going back and forth a little bit on different things. And when I was researching, there's 17 states currently putting forward bills to, for menstrual equity. And so, and then there's six that currently have tax-exempt. So a major, there's not that many doing gluten-free items tax-exempt. There's not that many doing, you know, eye care tax-exempt. Like, this is clearly an issue that they're seeing through, again, United Nations Human Rights Watch declaring different things. Like, they're seeing that this will help this step forward. And again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do bladder products, and we shouldn't do diapers, and we shouldn't do all those things, but I just, I am not a fan of saying then we do nothing. Does that, like, oh, if we can't do everything for everyone, we do nothing? And I see the, this push for menstrual equity across states nationwide. And so in my mind, there's clearly, you know...
What does menstrual equity mean?
So the, the definition, when I've been researching it, is women nationwide make less money than men. Women have periods, women's hair, they look at the expensive, the expenses that women are taxed on, and it far outweighs what men are taxed on, on a typical basis, like, like across the board. If you're, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to be able to sit here and recite every single little thing. You're going to have to go on and read and do all this, but in a nutshell, like, we're taxed, and we make less wages than a typical man. And so in order to try to make that more equitable, something that we can't control, something that can cause women harm, something that can, I mean, it's not a diaper where you're putting it on the outside of your clothes. You're, I mean, it can be something to that effect, but can also, women, and it can be...
Not having clean diapers can lead to lots of health diseases.
I'm not, no, I get that. I'm not here arguing, like, what, what is more important than other. I'm just telling you, 17 states have this bill going through. Five, six or seven, I don't, I have to go back and look, have already passed it, right? And so all I'm saying is that there's clearly, it's, it's a human rights issue, and I clearly support it, and I clearly want to see Durango, like, taking the steps to do what's right. And if this is a step we can take, and then next month, we can tackle, you know, bladder control, and the next month, we can tackle, like, we can tackle other things, but right now, we have this in front of us to do. So why say no, because we can't tax-exempt gluten-free products right now? Like, when no other state has done that?
I'm not suggesting that we can't do other things, because I think we can.
No, I agree.
We can just include all products in this tax-exempt bill, because there's going to be some group of people who have equity issues. And so I think the way to approach these kind of issues is to approach the real issue. What is the real issue? You're saying that there are people who cannot afford, and, and are, because of that, are having negative health consequences. Let's change that for those people. I don't really want to subsidize someone who makes $100,000 a year and buys menstrual products. It doesn't make any sense to me. And when you take averages, and you say, on average, we earn 17% less than men, that may very well be true. It doesn't mean it's here in Durango, for one thing.
That's here in Colorado.
It doesn't mean it's here in Durango.
I agree, but I'm just saying that's here in Colorado.
And that's still not an individual basis. That's an average. So I, I just, I don't see how we're addressing the real problem here, which is people who can't afford to buy healthcare products or anything else, food for that matter. They can't afford to buy food. So let's address that issue. Let's address the income level issue. Let's address the rebate issue. Let's address what we can do that actually helps the people we want to help. I don't understand how this addresses that problem.
I have a point, but I'm looking to...
Well, yeah, Melissa, because you haven't had a chance to...
No, I've already spoken once, so I'll wait, but I will.
It, this, I think this is a very interesting discussion. I'm glad we're having it. And I, I, once again, I think our, our boards and commissions are doing a good job bringing forth issues for us to consider and recommendations. I did reach out to several of my colleagues on the CML Board. I think seven or eight of them, just because I wanted to see what other communities were doing statewide. All except for one of them were basically emphatically no on this issue, interestingly enough to me, because in, in several instances, they said, you know, we rely very heavily on our sales tax income for revenue for our communities, to support our communities, to support our programs, for all. And if, and, and they basically said, and I just don't think our community would support, would support that, given that situation. Almost, again, another equity issue, but more being inclusive of the entire community. And so I just wanted to share that information with you guys, because I thought that was interesting feedback. I did receive one point of information, which was very, which, which they, they knew about Durango, and they were very informed about our systems, and they said, you have a rebate program. Why wouldn't you look at providing this, you know, exemption through the rebate program? And I would like to talk about that a little bit more, because I, I had that conversation with Jose, and he mentioned that we had brought, we did discuss that previously. But I'd like to bring that back to the table as an option, because I do think that that would also address what the mayor is suggesting, in that we are helping the segment of the population that we're trying to help in that situation, and actually creating equity for those that need the help in that situation. So can you address that?
Well, I'd like to add something. Well, first of all, I do appreciate the discussion all around. I think that's healthy. And Counselor Beal, I appreciate especially the research you did on this issue. I don't think that it's always about people with low income not being able to afford this. I come at it from an approach of women are taxed on something that they need, and that's one whole segment at a period of time that are taxed. Now, you can say, you know, you choose to have a baby, you choose to have these things, those are choices. You don't choose to have your period or not. You're taxed on it, and you're taxed on it because you're a woman. And then when I look at the list of all the exemptions that we provide, or have provided historically, I look at it and say, huh, you know, who's making the rules in, in this situation? But I, I want to say that I, I see it more as a, a group of people being taxed for something that is beyond their control.
So to that list of exemptions, not a single one of them are sold in grocery stores, for example. They're gasoline products, they're sheep and cattle, and all sorts of things like that. They are not things that are sold in grocery stores. And usually, the reasoning for most of that type of thing is because they're taxed later on in the chain somewhere. Or they're taxed, like cigarettes, through the state, and then we get that money back. So I, I, that list actually helped me see that there aren't any, there's nothing in the grocery store, for example, or in the hardware store, that we're exempting. And so I'm not, I'm not seeing that connection either.
So I'm hearing, without Counselor Bosman's here, I'm hearing two people going...
Melissa hasn't actually expressed...
Okay, I was just going to, well, nevermind.
You know, I, I had a couple thoughts on this. Number one, there, oftentimes when we have high-level policy discussions on issues, let's just talk it like e-bikes, which has been extremely controversial for our community over the last several years, we, we bring it to more than one, one boards and commission. And I was, I just wanted to throw that also out there as an option. And it might be interesting to, you know, in this case, the only one that I could actually think that would, would be appropriate would potentially be the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee? I mean, I don't know, unless you guys can think of anything else? But I mean, obviously, we're not going to take it to the Airport Commission. I mean, I don't know. But I was trying to think of, you know, seeing if there's other ways. The way I'm looking at this is, we have received a recommendation from the Community Relations Commission. I appreciate the work that they're doing. They're supporting our DEI goals. I appreciate that. It's in our strategic plan. We want to progress these goals forward, so I appreciate that work that they're doing. I just, I am hearing what the mayor is saying, and I am also wondering if we should have any further input into it. There was an article in the Durango Herald, and yet we've only received one article from Ms. Marbury, which I appreciate very much, but...
And Carla.
And Carla. But quite, very little community dialogue about this issue, and so potentially, maybe it's not as big of an issue as we think, in which case, if it's going to support our goals and objectives of DEI, then I'm, you know, I'm wondering if, if, if supporting it wouldn't be a good goal, a, a good thing to do. So I'm, this is what I'm weighing.
Where you were going, Melissa, was partially where I was going to go. But I was going to suggest that we consider, one, bringing it back to the CRC with the feedback that we've received, and also through Erin, taking it to our DEI consultant, and asking from the lens of that, from an inclusion with the points that were raised, what's the merit of that as well? Because I, I don't see consensus here, but I also don't want to completely rule it out. I would suggest a continuance with those, kind of getting more information from the commission that recommended it, and the DEI consultant.
And I'd like to get information on that rebate policy.
Yeah.
The rebate program, like, how does it work? Is it super, that's the other thing, like, is it super complicated to get money back? As if it is...
It's a really good question, and I asked Jose about that, and I don't really know. Because Jose had mentioned that we actually had discussed this previously as a council and dismissed it. But I think that actually, it may warrant additional research. I don't know much about the rebate program and how complicated it is to fill those forms up. It's a good question. Yep, and if it's burdensome, that's not going to work.
To that point, the people that live across the street from me, 41 of them file sales tax rebate forms every year. So I've had some conversations with them, and I think that in this case, we would have to change that particular program. Because I don't think, for example, whether you have to bring in a sales tax receipt every time. I think that for someone who has, buys menstrual products, it's pretty standard what a, what a normal amount of buying of menstrual products might be. And if you're out of the ordinary, you can make a case for that. And the sales tax applicable during your time would be pretty standard. So I think it could be streamlined and simplified very easily, if that's what our government... So I think it could be streamlined and simplified very easily, if that's what our goal is, is to help people who have trouble affording that, afford that, without having to go through, you know, providing receipts or whatever they might have to do now.
I would support that conversation. I, I think that's, that's useful. I'd still like to hear back from the CRC.
I agree too. I'd like all three of them, to be honest, because I'm not, I, I'm not saying no that I don't support tax-exempt altogether, for the record, because I think that it's gonna come statewide, and until it does, I feel like it's a good step for our city to be.
Okay, so how about a motion then for a continuance of this topic until we pursue further contact with our, outreach again with our Community Relations Commission, outreach with our DEI consultants, and research into potential alterations to our rebate program to make this more accessible?
Are you making that motion?
I am trying to.
Good. Well, you said, how about a motion? So I just wanted to make sure you were.
Yes, I'm trying to make that motion. Is.
That's good.
Did I capture it?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that? Can I repeat that, or you have it?
It's on tape.
I've got it. Okay.
If, I may.
Well, wait a minute. There's been a motion made.
I'll second the motion.
Now, now discussion.
The, the part that I would ask is, if we were gonna go to the CRC, is to ask the why? Because I think we have two different thoughts that have been thrown out. Not saying it's not one or the other, but I think it would be before looking at a rebate program, to see on CRC's recommendation, was it based on equity, or was it based on affordability? Because I think if it was based on an equity argument, or position, that maybe them flushing that out and going through CPSHR, CPSHR, who is our DEI consultant, and coming back to council, that's kind of one decision. Because the part I look at is, we can absolutely look at the rebate program, but if that wasn't what their goal was, then we're kind of spinning our wheels just a bit on that. And I really think maybe that first step is to see from the CRC a more clearly defined what was the intent and purpose of this. And then if it is affordability, I mean, staff, we can always take a look and come back with a, a, a problem about what, or a, a pattern of what it would take to go through a reimbursement or a rebate program. But I think the real first step is to go back to the CRC and say, okay, really define and explain to us the intent and the purpose for your recommendation on this, this proposal.
As the liaison, I think that's an appropriate request of them.
I, the only response I would have, Jose, is that I think it might be a little bit of both.
And if it is, that's one that we can go through. I just want to make, I think that it's a, from, from just a policy by side, just looking at it, it's like, I don't know what I'm getting here, is there's different, there's not seeming to be an understanding of exactly why this was presented. And I think starting with the why, with the CRC of what is it? And if it does happen to be both, then absolutely, let's go and take a look at it. But I do think, and obviously, I'm not a, I'm not an expert, nor do I intend to be, but I'm going to think that this might have more of a feel of an equity issue than it may be of an affordability issue. And if that's the case, I'd like to just kind of get, to be able to get with the CRC and have staff come back with actually where their intent is coming from, so that we can actually address and have a conversation based on where they see this issue being. And again, if it's always, if it does go to the affordability, we can still do the, the, the rebate program, and the motion that you've made, I think, still stands. I just want to make sure that from a staff perspective, I think it's important that we check in with the CRC first before we kind of decipher what this seems like and where it goes.
Are you, okay.
Well, I guess my question, so if they came back and the CRC says, hey, this is just an equity issue, we don't really matter about the affordability side, and I want to make sure that, that from a, from the motion, it means we still have to go look at a rebate program, because it's to have staff analyze a rebate. And I don't want to have to analyze a rebate if they're saying, if this is only, this is purely, we're standing on as an equity issue. I'd rather than just kind of have that discussion with the council about the equity side.
How about a friendly amendment to it? Yes, please, please. Yeah. Would be that it goes to the CRC for their comments on it, and based upon their response, then we may embark upon an evaluation of the sales rebate program, and we may go on to our DEI consultants with that conversation.
But I would second that.
Well, you have to agree to the.
I agree to the amendment. Okay.
Still stand?
Yes.
I'm working on these Roberts rules, Bob's rule.
Bob's rule. Okay, so friendly amendment.
Yes. Discussion on this topic?
No, I think discussion is healthy.
I think so too.
And I, I think you always learn a different perspective. And again, I wanted to say, I didn't feel I could speak emphatically on this, is what the CRC said, and I appreciate, Jose, you're bringing it back so that we get a real clear definitive statement on that.
And I wanted to thank the CRC again for bringing it forward and supporting our DEI goals and objectives, which I believe that they're trying to do through this. And I think, just quickly to Jose, what I'm thinking about is, my hope is, if, if ultimately it ends up, if you end up looking at the rebate program, I'm hoping that it's not a big analysis and basically doing what the mayor was requesting, which was, can we simplify it just for this one area? Such that if that was the route that council decided to go, for financial affordability ways, that we could make that a more accessible and easily used program potentially, if council decided to do that.
Absolutely.
All right. Any more discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. All righty, on to 11.1.2, a public hearing to consider an easement for La Plata Electric Association to service the new Animus High School. I've lost all my.
It is Bryce Beerman with Community Development, who is actually here. So Bryce, I did not recognize you without the glasses. So there we go.
I thought you were gonna say without his mask.
All right. Yes, so this is an easement request that originates on a city parcel that is landlocked. The rest of the easement will run through private property. We do have some say over that part, because that easement runs on a hillside or a ridgeline. So we have taken some extra care with the contractors to mark trees along the route to try to save any calipar trees of six inches or larger. So we went, and we feel comfortable with the way forward now that we've expressed our concerns as far as maintaining vegetation on the route. We can click through here. This is a context map. If you see here, this square is the city parcel. It's completely landlocked, but we have an electrical pole right there, and that's where the easement will start. It'll go into the ground from the pole, and they will bore up the hillside along this highlighted yellow route. And this is to supply power to the new Animus High School that will be constructed near the Fort Lewis campus.
So that is the corner where Booker Lumber and Gigline, where Gigline Gulch comes around the center onto college?
Yes, this is Ted's rental, the True Value rental, yes.
And Booker Lumber was across the street. Yeah, okay.
Before my time.
Yeah, oh, sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay. So that's the context map. This is the, the actual, the description of the easement. It shows there's an existing old pole here, and the newer pole is right here, and that's where the boring would begin to go up the hill to the high school. This is our, our recommended motion, and I guess I will leave it to you guys to let me know if you have any questions about the process, if there are any worries, I can settle.
What ordinance number would this be? Doesn't matter.
The ordinance hasn't been drafted yet, it'll just depend on your.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
I do.
Oh, whoops, sorry. I have to open the public meeting. I'm opening the public meeting. Are there any public here who need to make a comment? No? How about virtually? Tom, do we have any virtual participants?
We do not.
Okay, I'll close the public meeting, and now, counsel. Questions?
Sure. Do you have a sense of the value of the city-owned property that is, the easement is being requested?
I do not. Again, it is landlocked, so I cannot picture any, any use other than for the electrical poles that are there. I think that's why it is still a city lot. But I, I cannot speculate as to the value, and we haven't really calculated that at this.
No trails, no park, no open space?
No, I don't think so. It's a very graded hillside. That would be difficult to establish anything like a park. And again, we would have to work with one of those surrounding residents to get access to the site anyway.
Would you go back, please, to the map?
Yes.
It's, it's that one, which parcel is it?
It's this square one.
Right there. It may very well be that at some point in time, that was purchased through the Natural Lands Board for a view.
Yes.
That's ringing a bell for me, so I'm kind of thinking that might be part of the reason why.
That's why I asked. I, I thought perhaps there's a historical purchase there, or even wildlife, prey, birds, anything that was a reason we actually own that property.
The city also, I'll chime in, the city also owns a parcel to the northeast of this tract. The city owns various pieces in there, but they're not, they're not contiguous at this point, particularly this piece is isolated.
Yes, so this, this is the Hermesman property here, this is state agricultural land here, and then this would be, I think, BLM land, or, or, yeah.
And then the city owns a tract in there as well, another.
Right.
And I will say, so on that site right now, there are two electrical poles. This east, right in the very corner of this property, on the far property line where the three intersect, is where the, the light pole will be, and it will simply go into the ground from there and bore up the hill. So the, the changes to the city-owned property are gonna be minimal. The pole is already existing there, and they're really just gonna run, instead of running from an older pole here to here, and then up as a, as a hanging line, they're gonna run it from the newer pole and straight into the ground. So ultimately, there should be less impact on the site than there was before, because there's currently hanging lines from the older pole to the newer pole.
I always think it's useful to know the value of something you may be giving away.
Sure.
If only for, you never know what's gonna come down the road 20 years from now. And so without it being too difficult, that would be of interest to me. And I'd also want to be really certain that there were no purchases of that property for any other reason that this might, you know, this easement might interfere with.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly look.
But I'm not directing you, all of counsel has to agree to that.
Yeah. I'm not certain how an easement affects the value of the property, this kind of an easement when it's underground in particular. And I, I'm, I, I don't think it's as complicated as.
Maybe actually you could explain. I, I feel like in the Buckley Park, we provided an easement that we're now finding could have potential value, even though the easement is in many ways, is not same underground. But you can find that down the road, all of a sudden, wow, that we, we gave this away, and there isn't value to this.
Yeah.
So, but I don't want it to be too complicated, I just wanted a sense of.
Okay. I, I, I don't, I'm not certain how you'd calculate that value anyway, but, counselors, what, what's your thought on that?
Typically, these easement discussions haven't been as complicated for, for electrical that are buried, and I, I 100% support the project for our community, and getting a new, new school up at Fort Lewis College, and the, and the relationship that, you know, Animus High School has with Fort Lewis College, and what's, what's about to happen for a good number of students, an option in education, and I, I kind of hate to hold that up. They have, they're doing a lot of work up there, and I think they're hoping to continue to move forward, and they definitely need electricity.
Oh, I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with any of that. I, I just feel as though it's a business transaction, or a community transaction. And for me, without it being too much work, whether it's LPA, or so whoever might say, this is the value it is to, to have this, it's just helpful to know that we made this kind of contribution to helping make something happen.
There's a reason why there's no development in that area on that side there, and it has to do with not being very accessible for development.
Sure.
I can make a suggestion, that the outcome, or the suggested outcome would be to have council approve the preparation of an ordinance. So you're not, just to be clear, you're not actually approving the grant of the easement tonight, you're authorizing the preparation of an ordinance. So we could go ahead and do that, because the documents are all essentially prepared already. And then when we bring that ordinance back in two weeks, we can provide some additional information about the size of that lot, to lay out a little bit more detail, how it was acquired, because I don't know. So at the time, for first reading, we can provide that information, and if council is satisfied, you can vote at that point. And if not, then we can take a different tactic, so.
Okay, I would support that.
So do we have a motion then to direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinance?
I'll move to approve the La Plata Electric Association's easement across city-owned property for a new electrical service line, as depicted in the attached documentation, and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance authorizing the granting of this easement for a first reading at a regular scheduled city council meeting, while also getting additional information to council about the property, and that's directed by Counselor Nosworthy.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Are there any items that we're missing, or I might have overlooked in our shuffle here? No? If not, then our meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.